Stanley of Town Hall Pride, resident of Town Park, of the Town Park field in South County State, qualified to vote by law in Town affairs to meet up with Town office at experience for an attorney. And notify and warn the state each 2025 at 9:00 AM to act on Article 3 through 46 set out did take place yesterday where her man just started meeting while passing on to Mr. Luke.
We'll find a way to America in history of our planet from which it stands one nation under God in indivisible, but they might be in justice for all.
Thanks for acting and we'll start fighting. Before we get down to brass tacks, Jen has something to end with.
And it is my pleasure, this year we're awarding the Spirit of America Award to the 21 Club. They used to be the 21 Club of Peas or Falls in 1921, so I originally thought that the 21 Club meant to have be 21 and maybe a little more, but no, that's not it. So they've been around for over 100 years. They're a group of volunteer women and I think probably over 20 in your club. I think the land that the health center is on was donated and they were the instigators behind getting the health center built. They've done a lot, they do an annual scholarship, books for babies they give to, and they do just an awful, awful lot. So in that, our original members right here.
We can pull more out. All right, and for those who didn't see the result, a four for a three-year term, same votes. Mr. Becker, a tax collector, a three-year term. For a road commissioner, for a road commissioner. MSAD director for a three-year term. People usually do this to pick on their friends. For planning board, um, openings, Denise Kirk, 19 vote, all of those folks, two-year term, Sharon Hasky as director of the pipe for free high funds for a three-year term. Stanley Pride has 140 votes and multiple rights. Let's get down to spending money. We'll move on to Article 3 to see if the town votes to combine its various non-dedicated summits on Article 3. Then there's a vote. Article 3 is a debt of the unappropriated surplus balance to reduce the 2025 tax commitment. You want a second? You don't have to wait for me to ask you, it'll move things right along.
These are monies that have not been passed around until the auditors look at it. It's typically-
Here and none, all those in favor? For borrowing from the town's reserve accounts in anticipation of taxes. Set about not putting some-
And I mean, I'm new to borrowing from the town. I understand his reserve amount and what's the reason where the town-
This is a standard boilerplate type of article that appears on, on Town Meeting warrants all over, but-
The budget, we know that. So this just gives-
No, because our fiscal year started on July 1 of this year.
Right, right, right.
Will determine what taxes are going to be, a guarantee that we're not going to run out of-
But it's cost of the town 7%, right? If you say it.
If we use-
Am I reading it right?
If we use-
If you use it, okay.
Certain amounts of, of funds are raised and allocated into certain little boxes. And to take money out of some of those boxes, like in Article 7, like that, I moderated a number of towns-
You just want the ability there-
If we're about to five as presented, put on the list of 2025, can you go by it during the period and motion? I'll move. Those opposed, close all unexpended appropriations and overdrafts into the unappropriated- Here and none, all those in favor of Article 7 as presented. Article 8, to see if the town votes to expend the following dedicated fund control, local road assistance, FEMA grants, uh, MEEF, we have a motion on Article 8. So move. Here and none, all those in favor of Article 8 as presented. The sum of $268,482 dollars, the amount are listed below. You can read it better than I can. Yes?
Hi, can we discuss a particular line or we have to discuss the whole number?
We can discuss most anything we want, or what particular line would you like to talk about?
All right, so I believe that the select board members should take a haircut in the trash removal budget. Because they didn't start soon enough, they're getting better for the town from a money standpoint. And they went with the original, the trash hauling went up like, you know, shit in there, stipend sales, in that amount.
Most to raise and appropriating a certain source to reduce it, you can't increase it, but you can reduce it. If you really want to, you could by a certain percentage, if you, if you're sure of the figures and-
But, but I would still like to offer a mandate to reduce the select board members and get salaries stipended, let's say by 10%.
Okay, pay the pro- Vote into amend. Article 19, the amount by $3,226, which would take that amount from- Amendment on the floor, is there any discussion on the amendment? Yes, sir?
Here from the selectmen to get more clarification, uh, then I heard other things, I don't know what's true, um, I-
Went up to bid, up of information that was in the previous, 80 tons, the contract at the time, uh, they were doing their due diligence and following, uh, the current contractors around and they obviously determined that the amounts weren't lining up for what they had to perform a contract at that price.
13 years.
It was reported as 80 for the year.
Was that just a typo? Was that a typo or was that a, you know, was that another zero?
There were track-
Be great, uh, is that-
Um, punitive to try and reduce their salary to, uh-
I can tell you right now we're going to do it with money. And if the town wants to-
On the amendment to reduce potential detriment in the select board, if further questions come, that's on the amendment. Here and none, $26, all those in favor of the amendment to- That fails. We'll go back to Article 9. Who wants to say anything for the road commissioner?
Who's not it paid? The road crew, which the road commissioner will get here.
Who's the company that's doing the road work for the town?
Yes.
You're saying it's like the town? So the body didn't vote for him?
The thing is that it, which we do not have, okay, that would be an-
Are you sure exactly being spent is all going within the same?
Yes, sir. The invoices we get describe what, what roadwork has been done, tons of gravel, sand, the roads that are being ditched or graded, or the equipment that is being used, and those all get filled. So we get those invoices, we know exactly where the money is going. Is that what you mean?
No, no. Basically, those- He said what Dan?
I was just going to point out, I want to make sure there's actually Article 21, if you break down the general highway expenses, is there there a deal?
Yeah, Article 21, it shows on what?
See, what I don't understand is, I'm sorry, if I interrupted.
No, but I don't know, I'm-
Go ahead.
Go ahead and, and I've got a couple more people. What I occasionally do is point to people quietly and say, okay, so they don't have to have their hand in there.
Here, the-
Or right after what this crew is, I guess we'd say that.
I'll shut up.
Okay, I got, I got a couple people ahead and yes, I'll be back.
If I'm not mistaken, I can speak for myself, but just so maybe driven by the fact that the road work that's been done recently is atrocious and-
Amen.
They cut the banks back on Middle Road and targeted on other roads too, right up to the stone walls, the stone walls are about to wilt, totter into the point where, um, people can pick up their speed quite a bit. And I don't think this is consistent with what we want our town to look like or with the, I don't know what kind of job he does, but it looks like what people are aiming at is a little bit more, um, oversight on how the roads are handled.
Way to the back corner, you have your head, okay, yes, down in front, the blue gloves?
Asking again about the line items for the budget, um, back to what he was referencing, um, and again, why I question whether or not this can be truly done, uh, without bias. Uh, North section and South section for winter road maintenance, they went to their budget, exactly. New Hampshire DOT plowing, they were budgeted 15,000, they gave back a $12,858.43 number. They did not use every last drop that they had, and I'm sure they can account better for how they spent the money rather than say, oh yeah, we spent all of it. So back to what they were asking before, is there a brand receipts for the expenses that we're being told?
Yes.
Okay, not invoiced receipts for how the money was being spent.
Would those be public information or somebody, somebody wanting to go through Paul Ross?
Anytime, we can see all the deals that are made, are believed, so in time.
Yet, you know, they have to buy the trucks, the main New Hampshire DOT, the state thing?
I, no, I- So they have to buy their trucks every-
The difference there is, so the, the plowing is a contract amount. It could not snow the entire winter and they give them, they did it for two years in that, in that, and then they build this for one. And that's why that happens.
Article 7, we address what we're talking about is because we're addressing that. As a moderator, my thought is, Town meeting is generally once a year, this is the best and only time that you all have-
Always the articles that's addressed on-
It's, it's kind of wider, kind of wider path and ask, again, I, I have a chance a year to, to really put these folks' feet to the fire.
I'm not saying it can't be addressed, it's just that not, not, it's not out of this article.
It's, it's judgment of the moderators. A gentleman behind with the-
I would just second what the gentleman said out, when we get to Article 21, um, and I'm not, you know, I think it's great that we've started that conversation, um, but I agree that if we can do the vote on Article 9 and then move on, we get to Article 21.
Yes, yeah.
My name is Jeffrey, I'm the CEO, but why are those-
Those are the budgets around here.
Well, can we lower it?
Well, I mean-
Say how the towns give?
Yep.
And since we're talking about the CEO, that's it.
New dwellings, I can play 24, there's 21.
Okay, let's like, look, should do this, um, on the end of the last five years, since we're talking about CEO. Okay, we'll move on.
I, I, I'll tell you, I wish the town, if I, if it's about as permanent as the calls add, and we're not having, having much luck, uh, I hope we can find somebody to, to bring in hand. Let's see if the town general, uh, $170, uh, do we-
I have to support, it's been needed.
We, we put out there, that that's unrealist.
And about three years to get that from them. I can tell you that we have not spent very much at 20,000.
Right.
At 20,000.
Right, because it's just, the legal part's just, because it's just, the legal part's just-
They only get some help from the state, they only get some help from the state on office of cannabis policy, the office of cannabis policy. Right. Did you say 20,000? Right. Did you say 20,000?
Yes.
What is that?
The fees in the-
What is that?
The fees in that lump sum, that lump sum. Those charged legal fees, $780, um-
That was a situation where, was a situation where I believe you were applying for a site plan review, that if, I believe you were applying for a site plan review, that if any legal advi- any legal advice is required, that the-
Should have probably-
Advice is required, that the-
Should have probably been better educated for it, and we've been better educated for it and not charged the per-
Can we stay on topic? Can we stay on topic?
Um, I will ask, are there any final questions, comments before we vote on Article 7? Jeffrey briefly, couldn't wait to do that.
Right, I, I think professional services, um, sometimes are required, sometimes are required because, um, because, um, uh, some of our, some of our boards, that's why we use some of the money up to the boards, that's why we use some of the money up to the, uh, we use, we use folks in all that stuff in his own time. Folks in all that stuff in his own time.
Article 7 is accepted. Uh, somebody vote by accept it. Uh, somebody vote by show, the reason it requires a proceed, make statements and discussion, that's how it goes. So that's why, that's why I couldn't, I couldn't accede to your mulled-in suggestion. Now, now you know how to do it. It'll be ready to go. Let's move to Article 11, see if the town votes to raise the, from these 5,000, from these 5,000 dollars to be placed in the sidewalk, $1,000 to be placed in the sidewalk. Yes, sir?
Maybe not know the exact word.
This article's before, this article's before, that was available on the back, um, every time there is a reserve article, the, it was available on the back, um, every time there is a reserve article, the, um, rounds will be on the side here, so.
Trying to get with them to, to have it there, trying to get with them to, to have it there, to not spend on money, spend their money, to not spend on money, spend their money.
Yes? Yes, since we're talking about sidewalks and ICHs and double generals.
Yeah, we hire the private company, you know?
Okay.
They have to get rid of it.
Yeah. Ready to vote on Article 11? All those in favor of Article 11 as presented? Those opposed? Article 11 is accepted. Article 12, chief town vote to raise and appropriate, Article 12, chief town vote to raise and appropriate following sums to cover, protect, following sums to cover protection expenses, the toll, the action expenses, the toll is 167,000 and nine yards.
I believe it's tornado fire highways that are-
Okay.
I believe it's tornado fire highways that are pumped out of, either sump out of, either cistern or a pond.
So, so it's-
Cistern or a pond.
So, so it's-
I think there won't be anybody that disagrees with you.
Get it up and just trash that.
Yeah, they're the ones, yeah, they're the ones-
We don't send them checks, what are they going to do? They're going to come take our money? We don't send them checks, what are they going to do? They're going to come take our money?
We don't send them a check, we don't send them a check, we send the water company a check.
Okay, so if we-
It's a public, we send the water company a check.
Okay, so if we-
It's a public utilities commission, utilities commission setting, I've been in touch with Quonex, our contractor, setting, I've been in touch with Quonex, our contractor.
Fan together, all, fan together, all the towns that are getting shut this down and other towns as well.
Inseparable-
All the towns that are getting shut this down and other towns as well.
Inseparable, move the question, that, move the question, that means we terminate hand. Call us for, that means we terminate hand. Call us for protection of, protection of expenses, those that the town votes to raise appropriate talk of expenses, those that the town votes to raise appropriate talk of sock to be rescued, behave in 12- I didn't hear a motion, I said-
I make a motion.
Okay, we, we kind of got to be a stickler about this because our good friends at TV2 are reporting this, if we make a mistake, we might be in trouble. Okay, uh, questions, comments on Article 13? Way to the back, sir.
Yeah, what's the justification for almost a-
Be great, please.
What's the justification for an almost 40% increase?
Yes? Yes?
Yeah, yeah, good morning, I'm Mark Bolton from the group collectively to address the-
Let me address that, I have valuable information in response to an important question. Yes, sir, go ahead. Now we're legal.
Thank you, thank you, folks. Uh, so a great question, um, we, as we can, there were three things in this year's, uh, costs that we were unable to control, uh, those three things being workman, workman compensation, um, the others, and the third article that went up was increased, uh, manpower level with the other departments around us, so those were the three items that, that generated about 30%.
Yes.
Yeah, I have a comment, uh, I'm Denise Kirk, to raise things up, and we totally agreed with them, I mean, and I think pretty soon we're going to need a new, um, ambulance that they want, they justify for in our reports. So I just want to, I want to, they're happy to see you, Emma, Anna boy.
Thank you.
Yes, please respond, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah.
Um, what will happen is, we have a billing number, you will receive a bill, or if there's a hook in, like maybe they copied the number down wrong, and we have a system in place, if you can't pay it, that you can pay months, what it costs for the, we are in catch their fire departments, basically. You could hire, you could hire up than a, than a corporation. You're paying, we get about $500,000 in insurance, and you're making up the difference as to what it costs, we try to save a little bit of control, because we're competing, we're competing with everybody else.
I was asking why you're killing so many people.
To your question, um, if you require our services and ambulance service, we are compelled to respond to your many debt collectors that will come to service you with a debt collection. It is by your choice not to pay them, then in turn will be presented to the, your selectmen the following year as an increased cost to the town. So to answer your question very specifically, if you choose not to pay, that, that cost will be passed on indirectly throughout every other member in the community. Does that answer your question?
So is the taxes from the town helping reduce the cost to the individual, is that what you're saying?
Um, if every accident and every incident was to pay 100, that's the difference that we need to operate.
Yeah, it just wasn't clear, I wouldn't be surprised if I didn't saw this and pay taxes and then I got in a-
To the service and request some sort of variance or-
Way to the back, yes, sir.
I'm the board director, as I'll struggle to try to make ends meet. When you look at that, it looks like a lot of money. You're being double dipping, I don't see it that way. If we get, if sockle fee is not supported, it serves school or households who's been made one time and another, they're going to cut coverage by about a half, and they're going to charge how much more?
Doesn't it double?
Probably double, we're going to, so, um-
Somebody had a hand up over here, yes, sir?
So what you were, you have a program where they will not get billed? I mean, because that would be wrong.
Don't count me, they do not know-
I'm not asking that, sir, I'm asking you. Income that will pay the bill for-
Correct, except that at this point, we do not personally copy that.
We talked about the chat-
And to move the question, we're not holding on to the question, we've both done, uh, limited debate, those in favor, move in question. Those opposed, move, all those in favor. Those opposed, most to be rescued capital reserve fund, we have motion. So move. Those opposed. Article accepted. Article 15, safe town vote, raise appropriate, 15 dollars, no. Yes?
I'm on the budget committee as well, and I think that we should probably put more money, uh, into the fire truck reserve account, because if we end up taking money from the reserve account, it will reduce the cost of taking a loan up to buy the fire truck. We're going to have to buy it anyways. But it is close article and my suggestion would, in the future-
In the future.
So that everybody knows that we should be putting more money off to the side, so we don't-
Here and none, all those in favor of Article 15 as presented? Those opposed. Article is accepted, our condition of real estate changes and maintenance of property records from the town, the tax assessment purposes, we have motion. I'll move. Move in secondary. Article 16 is accepted. Article 17, say deserve account. I'll move. Move in secondary, question's coming.
Second one is for a revaluation of the entire town.
That's for 10 years, then, right? Right.
Name is Joanna, John says, probably, is that what we're looking at here, is that is, that's correct.
David.
How does that work?
Now, if we get, have a townwide revaluation, say, we need to collect that amount of money, so, dollars that we approve here today, also, because we're not looking to collect any more money.
That's a state law, yeah.
Yeah, it was actually last done in 2000-
No, that's Article 17. Here, yes.
Townwide revaluation. If you're, that entire need for that reserve, it disappears, because that's what we need to get to the number that we've agreed to with the assessment.
Those in favor of Article 17, I'm late, see if the town- Going to the dump in the old days. Total is 405,000 dollars.
Just a comment, I realize we signed the contract, but we as a town screwed this whole process up. We didn't start the bidding process here at the board to allow the selectmen to enter into this contract. So we put ourselves, we royally messed this up, and if maybe moving forward, we could look into, you know, joining the dump people. On the recycling, uh, the $500 is fine. But we need to recycle more, need to put more effort into advertising, more, uh, recycling, and possibly some, since we're here, uh, just, just be aware that we need to be secure, we could borrow this stuff to drive that point home.
Those opposed. Article is accepted. And sand and salt expenses, we have a total for this, here and none, it's accepted, the road vacuums for the, uh, 2026, 27 winter through 2028, 29 winter. We have motion. I'll move. David.
Generally, the contact would, so their price would be higher.
Go. That became a three, there was a possible two years extension, which I follow though, a plus for the gun writer from 95. You are holding up to a double charge. Further questions, comments on Article 14?
Do you decide which road should be paved and how much? Does that confuse the select board that this is a road commissioner making a proposal to you, or how is that decided?
Further questions, comments on Article 14?
It's possible, yeah, have, have considered it?
Contract.
Big hole, I can't see it. How do you remember, anything? Anything else on Article, those opposed? Article 26, and we have 620,000 dollars highway bridge.
Does that what the guys set up the, uh?
And a lot of it has to do with the cost, very expensive to pave, so we'll get bids on what we feel the worst roads to pave, and then kind of shuffle it around and see what we can get down to, and I do present it with the selectmen, we talk it over and decide.
Okay, I, I just received a request from Who You Are, to put that into the minutes, and that's, that- and that's, that is.
But I'm coming back to what I said before, we need to see how decisions are made, with the, 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 you know, I'm not trying to do that, being on all the roads, a lot of numbers are flying around town, there's rumors how much it's costing, um, but that is related to the road.
Yes.
Well, I might do it, I, I think after the grass grows in, they, they look more, you know, the roads holding water, you know, so you're, you're water, so, the ditches are really essential.
Yeah, Dan Flint, um, Elm Street, Merrillville, Jack Falls.
But there's also another thing going on too, and, and they ended up, I don't know, they all that filled up, we do haul off, bring it to a couple of.
To touch on the weapons, um, so whatever the equip, whatever the town miles down the road, it can turn, cost more money, so, do what that is.
And I think the plantation saved you money, well, saved the town money.
Yeah, they found some spots.
By allowing us out, and, uh.
Technically, we try to haul them off, place them somewhat presentable, it's hard sometimes to make everybody happy, but that, that's kind of.
Yes, sir.
I just got one question, I, I know we've got, it's rather fostered, and, um, you might be able to possibly, really, nothing that you could recycle, it's just basically wasted, that you could recycle, it's just basically wasted, it's film material, so, it's film material, so, the more people that.
That thought it would be a good idea.
The more people that.
That thought it would be a good idea.
Invasive plants that are growing along, um, on South Road, yeah.
Uh, typically.
South Road, yeah.
Uh, typically, um, the Japanese snotweed, what you see on, the Japanese snotweed, what you see on South Road.
Yeah.
Is, it's, on South Road.
Yeah.
Is, it's spiked, just, it's, it's terrible, spiked, just, it's, it's terrible, so, the, because it's already, so, the, because it's already there, so we try to dump it there and not bring it to other people's, so we try to dump it there and not bring it to other people's properties, whenever we do the non-own properties, whenever we do the non-weed, uh, dug wells near the road, so we, uh, dug wells near the road, so there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people aren't, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of people aren't, obviously, people don't want it, so, obviously, people don't want it, so, we're kind of stuck with just keeping the, we're kind of stuck with just keeping the care or whatever, drag it down, and then transplant, and care or whatever, drag it down, and then transplant, and, I mean, we try not to spread it, but, I mean, we try not to spread it, but.
Roads are state much ways.
Would you say the percent?
Roads are state much ways.
Would you say the percentage?
Eighty-nine, is it, eighty-nine, is it, I think it's nineteen, nineteen or twenty. I think it's nineteen, nineteen or twenty, yeah, red and yellow line, painted lines, it's stated.
San Antonio section.
Yeah.
I live right here.
Yeah, from the golf course, basically, up to the corner.
No, yeah, I just, uh, no, yeah, I just, uh, I know that, uh, obviously the state bridges and highways, I know that, uh, obviously the state bridges and highways, I mean, I mean, a little one point seven trillion dollar, uh, construction, a little one point seven trillion dollar, uh, construction build there that was packed.
Uh, to try to get them to, to fix it, and they said that, basically, I kind of asked how that were on the state classifications of where they allocate the money to, so we're kind of like the bottom of the totem pole, we really don't get any precious addiction, really.
Anything else, before we vote, anything else, before we vote to a vote?
No, no.
Vote to work or accept.
No, I, I.
Vote to a vote.
No, no.
Vote to work or accept.
No, I, I, so, no.
Yeah.
I'm excited to provide it, but, you know, you can have paid money equipment for the roads.
I don't believe so.
Are you?
Just be more of, uh, other than cones and signage, I guess, it would be consumables.
Right. Ready to vote, is all those in favor? Bush, uh, Bush, uh, gets back to the schedule, Article twenty-two, six, gets back to the schedule, Article twenty-two, six, for the maintenance of roads, state funding road maintenance program is involved, is it a motion?
Move.
Move exactly, questions, go ahead.
Why do we need roads, do you wait until somebody actually calls, or has?
Uh, so, you know, if we're out, just riding the roads, we really do appreciate calls, appreciate calls, when there's a problem, it really helps us out, there's a lot of roads to look, we really try to minimize, when there's a problem, it really helps us out, there's a lot of roads to look, we really try to minimize, I support my family too, and I have excavation business, so I'm pretty busy doing that, but, so we really, we do appreciate the calls, that.
All those in favor of Article twenty-two, ask presented, those opposed, twenty-two, assistance program, we have motion, cultural historical society, it's, Article twenty-four, town vote to raise is seven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars, and you can see a list of worthy organizations that, that will go to, we have motion.
Due to being a bad individual.
That's okay.
This is, this article isn't the nice to have, it would be great if we could.
Now, that's all the more reason that we should be putting some money aside for people who are on a fixed income.
Yes, sir. What is?
Mike, I'm right, right? It's been, it's the report that tells us how many folks from Parsons that they have to.
Is that, uh, true?
Yes. Sweeter, Sweeter.
Okay, everybody with a brain, the Sweeter letters on page sixteen, I'm struggling to find them on some day one. Just, just hand up first.
Just a question, why do we give this money, just being nice?
Yeah, they provide services, uh, and monies that they may get, um, from the feds or the state, these organizations can appear on the, uh, on the war, I'll be right with you, Carol, in the way to the back, yes.
I agree, I just was wondering, where am I to them, kind of a balance, and we don't know how many people have, some did, and, and that you just went with the full father.
The Sweeters actually requested fifteen hundred, um, steel residents.
Actually really helping our people, our people in the town.
Just for example, they, people in the town, just for example, they, people to, to doctors, important doctor appointments, they can't, doctors, important doctor appointments, they can't, anybody here wanted to join in, especially the ones that are rich enough money, um, people wanted to join in, especially the ones that are rich enough money, um, they want to join, it's called the Great Fund, that if you haven't had yet, please see them about joining that project.
Further questions, call that's discussed, yes, go.
I had to have been on the committee for several years, two years ago, we have given a letter from some of the public, tell them how much money they think, is, is that some of that, okay, we, otherwise, all those in favor of Article twenty-five, eight pound vote.
Fifty, I believe it's nine sixty-three.
Come with the, I do know, like, some of the other.
We, we, money, collect until, just in the last couple of years, the Eastman Week Cemetery, um, um, somebody looked it up, they hired, there's a grave in North Road, they filled that in yet, that's, he's watching all the time, they filled that in yet, that's, he's watching all the time, um, um, that's the only thing he can do anymore, that's the only thing he can do anymore, it's hot, it's still in, one, I mean, all these little graves all around, berries, that's it, I guess, not, and, you know, a good win will take.
Yeah, this is deep to my heart, and, the more, the better, so, I want to say.
Ask presented, nine hundred fifty dollars for the town chair of Fire Department, Thomas, Jeffrey.
I've mentioned this before to the select board and budget committee, that maybe we should have a donation at polls.
All those in favor of Article twenty-seven, vote to appropriate the refunded fees from Snowville Recreation to be split equally between the Socapie Valley Snow Directors Incorporated Snowville Club and the Route eleven streetlights, Snowville Club, said something, the amount refunded by the state for finance construction or purchases of, of, oh, tax list for the year from spectrum trading costs, Article twenty-nine is accepted. What's that thing on the screen that says?
Oh, you're good.
Comes to two thousand dollars for each apartment, type apartment, town deliverance fire department, the town Eppenham Fire Department, for fire protection and Eppenham's Rescue for emergency first responders located for the western area of Parsons Field in Suingear, uh, we have motion.
Move.
Moving second, call that on Article thirty, go.
I'd like to know, if I could, if you could, if you could, now, last, he had jet planes, and he called us, nine-one-one, and who showed up in Dupia, in the nearest one door, not getting all the, because he, he'd fallen, gotta travel a long way to get over nine hundred pounds, yeah, yes, sir. Yeah, would you like mutual aid, and, uh, but we will, it's an offer, if we have two trucks for Parsons Field or Socapie Rescue was a lift.
I don't know.
Um, can the select board explain, can the select board explain the mutual aid agreement?
I didn't get any, but, um, no, that's all right, um, we have not had written mutual aid agreements in the past, mutual aid agreements with the organizations specified here, so if then the next, some here should be in place, we had the informal ones in the.
Want to hear the word, David?
Yes, sir. Formal agreements, written agreements are in the works.
Thirty is presented, please raise hands, those opposed, Article thirty is accepted, state town vote to raise appropriate fifteen thousand dollars to be placed in the municipal, yes.
So, so these papers says we've got like ninety-four thousand dollars in reserve fund currently, is that a real number, because I remember voting to expend these close to eight thousand dollars to do upgrades to this building, we have close to a hundred thousand dollars, not sure we need another fifteen in that reserve fund, but if it's already spent, then it shouldn't be on these paper, so that we can make, you know, in force, so he doesn't, or he does, I, I misheard.
So it would be twenty-one, if it's seven, if it's October seventh, it would be twenty-one thousand, eleven hundred.
Okay, so that's not a real number, then?
We haven't spent the money yet, so it is a real number.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to clarify, as those expenses come in, they get transferred out of the reserve account, and then checked and paid out, so that is a real number currently because of that.
Okay. Right, so it's not a real number.
Anything else on Article thirty-one, hearing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-one is presented, please raise your hand, those opposed, article is accepted, thirty-two, leave the town by a vote of the town on the ninth of March nineteen fifty-two year, we have motion.
I'm moving.
Moving second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-two, those opposed, thirty-two is accepted, Article thirty-three, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate five hundred dollars upon the account of Parsons Field Recreation Committee.
I'm moving.
Second.
Moving second, discussion, Jeffrey.
Two things, um, I noticed on Article twenty-four, it didn't list, so would Article thirty-three be, next year would be listed in Article twenty-four?
Yeah, this is the first year, it's a new committee, this is the first year that we're asking for money for, so, yes, if we go.
I get it, but, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, um, we could have a separate, separate one, two, but.
We are part of the Red Council.
Okay, we're part of the Red Council, but we started our own committee, right, committee.
Yeah, potential for something down at the bot shop, uh.
Maybe, maybe we should drop to be a member of the other committee, and put those ideas forward, if they got a bigger bank.
Okay.
Funds, um, and they're appointed by the selectmen, so say I want to be on that committee, I can volunteer.
You have to have a baseball club, though.
I don't, I got a bat.
Anything else on Article twenty-three, here and now, all those in favor of Article thirty-three, uh, all those in favor of Article thirty-three is presented, raise your hand, those opposed, thirty-three is accepted, thirty-four, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board on behalf of the town to accept or refuse donations in a bequest that may be offered to the town, and if accepted, distribute same in accordance with the wishes of the donor, such expenditures shall be in addition to any other amounts raised or appropriated elsewhere for similar purpose, you have motion?
My first thing was, why would we refuse a donation?
Sometimes they come with conditions that the town may not like, yeah, somebody, somebody gives the town a million bucks, would, yes.
Is the current way to do this that is presented to the town, reading that language, it sounds more like, you don't need to go down that.
This article, this article, uh, authorizes the select board in that case.
So, is the current, is the current way we do it now, that if someone wants?
Um, the way, the way this is written, the select board consider and make the decision.
I know, but I'm saying, currently, is the current way we do things, the town needs to meet me with the select board, is this changing that rule?
No, no, this has been the same for years.
We voted same question.
Oh, so we just say, yeah, so can we change the language of this to say that, as a town, we would like to meet and vote, kind of, yeah?
Yeah, it, it could be changed, I don't think we can do that today, it's changing in nature, but, um, the, I guess the issue there is, if you decide you want to pursue that, might put a limit, a lower limit on, uh, how much would have to, or, yeah, lower than that, how much would have to go to the town, I mean, they donate five hundred dollars to put a new sign up somewhere, you know? John, let's go, I would assume that we can trust the selectmen if there happens to be a big donation coming in to actually vote a hearing?
Go. I'm, this isn't really a donation, but it is donation, I like the fact that I ought to commit all, commit all of town offices to, to keep a donation yard, and I'll put them, but can't get through a sentence to help them reach a meeting, and we're, I know one year when Dave was, uh, worked, worked in the office a lot, he bought a half a lot of wood from me, and when I'm at the, I'm at the door, and he paid me for it, so we got to deliver it.
Yeah.
Somebody over went out of the building, their family all that, they didn't have much, very money, and they had, they couldn't afford to buy the wood, and that's what they needed, but, he bought a half a lot from me, so this is a little bit of that.
Half a ton, a lot, all the way tonight, yeah.
They thought it was a gift, I said, well, it is, when people are coming, they don't thought it was a gift, I go to them, I said, don't make your job, I think that's a good thing, absolutely.
Jeffrey.
I think as long as the, uh, Article thirty-four is brought after a workshop and a select board meeting about a, a certain donation that the public, if they do attend meetings or listen to the broadcast that they'll give, it's a great, as well.
Have you got a call to someone you will yet, sir?
Huh? Oh, yeah, yeah.
There you go, okay, further discussion, yes, sir.
I'm Daniel Bushman, I do think that the wording of this would be better to have a limit on the amount, let's say, anything under X amount, select board fine, but anything of value over X amount, the town ought to have him.
Neither for them or against, but we can't change the wording here, is that correct?
And we have to have a, a warrant article, to do such a conversation.
I, I would recommend that, since we're probably, as the gentleman pointed out, we may be talking about significant chunks of money in some cases, if somebody, well, I mean, half a million dollars used to be a lot of money, you can die with half a million dollars now and you're nobody's special, you are. You can die with half a million dollars now and you're nobody's match up yard. I, I would say look into it for next year's warrant to be safe. Further discussion on article thirty-four.
So an amendment can't be made to set a limit?
Let me see how I put that in.
That's a pretty dramatic change. I, I know because then you're saying.
I'm just told by what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Then you're saying we have to go to town meeting basically, towns in plus. And personally, I would say that that's more of a change than would be allowed.
Yeah, it's, there is a thing in articles called scope. And this, this to, to decide where's an amount or rejecting an amount of money, um, I would say that that is outside the scope of this particular article, therefore not subject to an amendment at this meeting. However, I think the point is very well taken. I would recommend that the selectmen and townspeople look into it for next year's town meeting and just trust that somebody's not going to leave you a million bucks in the interim. But again, you have to set up a mechanism, set up a little limit to where it's, it's really worth messing with. Yeah, the idea has merit. Further discussion on article thirty-four. Hearing none, all those favor of article thirty-four as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Um, just curious. In, in the, in the last ten or twenty years, has anyone donated a big fat chunk of money to the town, like fifty or a hundred thousand?
No.
No? Or not a million either?
None.
All right. Okay, article thirty-five. This is a boil thing article. See if the town will vote to establish sixty days after commitment as the date when the twenty twenty-five real estate and personal property taxes will be due and payable and to establish a rate of seven percent interest to be charged on all unpaid taxes filed on that date. The maximum allowable rate set by the state of Maine is seven point five percent per day. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Thirty-six, see if the town will vote to establish a rate of. Move the second. Discussion. Jeffrey.
I, I brought this up before. I think maybe our tax books should be broken up a little bit for those that end up in trouble on the campaign taxes. I know everybody knows the taxes you do, best start of the year, but other towns are breaking it up to a quarterly or a half a year.
Yeah.
And if somebody gets pays it right off the bat, they get the two percent, even though other towns don't get the two percent.
Carol.
There is one here, as Dave always is, about paying yet. And that's like when I completely said, let's turn it back to one or hundred fifty or whatever it takes, you should wind up with a bit at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, otherwise we couldn't, we'd be under real mess.
Takes the pain out of it a little.
A pain.
Yeah, I know in Baldwin, we went to, you can pay it all and then you'll send us a bill this month. You can pay it all at once, or you can pay half an hour and half in six months. Make your choice and, uh, depending on family budget, that may be a, a smart thing. But anyway, this is about two percent discount. Further discussion. And occasionally back in town, I mentioned that Parsons Field got a two percent discount if you paid Rockaway. Proper promptly, they just laughed at me. I think it's a hell of a good idea. Article thirty-seven, see if the town will vote to use the tax lien mortgage method for collection of unpaid taxes after expiration of eight months, eight in full. The maximum allowable rate set by the state is seven point five percent. The select board shall use the special sale process required by thirty-six MRS section seven forty-three C for qualified homestead property if they choose to sell any tax lien proposed property to anyone other than the former owners. Have motion.
Process or set properties with.
David. If proceeds above and beyond the taxes due, cost of sale and any legal fees involved have to go back to the prior.
That was put in by the state of Maine three, four, five years ago to prevent towns which they had been doing from taking forefolds property and selling it, making a profit on it, leaving the poor guys with nothing. So that is accepted. Article thirty-eight, see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept free payment of taxes, the amount collected not forfeited. Don't move. Move the second. Hearing none, opposed. Article thirty-eight is accepted. Article thirty-nine, see if the town will vote in excessive, the full amount assessed in accordance with MRS A type of thirty-six section five zero six A. We have motion. Don't move. Move the second. Discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of article thirty-nine as presented. Those opposed. Article is accepted. Article forty, see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to use monies from the overlay account for real estate and property tax discount and tax abatement, including any interest approved thereon.
Is this overlay account typically how much money is involved? Who else talked about that?
I'm gonna get my tongue tied here because I can't explain it properly. It is similar to the surplus, but much less. Again, it's a number that the auditors tell us and relates, again, not forgotten, but not now.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a separate term.
But, yeah.
Further discussion on article forty. Hearing none, all those in favor of article forty as presented. The sum of twenty-five hundred dollars to help cover the cost of tree removals here as a result of a citizen's petition. We have a motion. Move the second. Um, we have a citizen here who was involved in the petition. Yes.
Air Association. And we have many dead maple trees. We call the old section and then we have the annex section, which is newer, which is fine. The old trees are rotting from the inside out. They, limbs are breaking off. It's, it's a mess. It's really bad. And we're worried about the old stones because these stones date back to early mid eighteen hundreds. There's veterans, um, they, they wouldn't need to be taken care of. I had contacted a tree group that I'd worked with before and they were willing, this was a year ago, so it probably changed a little amount, but they were willing to donate the equipment to take these trees down for us. They basically would just have to pay them the amount, um, which twenty-five hundred dollars for like four trees was pretty game good. Town's property. So those we don't have to have taken down by our group. It's just the ones that are inside the cemetery. Anybody wants to look at it, it's right on Weeks Road, um, in East Parsons Field and it's a very nice old town.
So if you expect twenty-five hundred dollars, you're gonna write us a check?
Was the estimate you gave me. It could possibly be more.
Sure.
Because that was a year ago. But the.
But that shouldn't be a goal. You vote to be to do it as inexpensively as possible.
Twenty-five hundred.
The cavalier attitude about spending our tax dollars, it's pervasive here.
As I had said previously, we have never had any help from the town on our cemetery and we have veterans in there, um, raised they do back to early eighteen hundreds, so.
On that, to a group and they.
There was an invoice.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we would not just give them the money.
Good.
Jeffrey.
Is this one of the three town cemeteries?
On Weeks Road?
Right.
No. This is, this is a nonprofit private owned.
That it should be taken care of the town cemeteries first, Jeffrey, if you can get home, because we have a lot of trees on our cemetery that need to be cut down. The town report has a picture, very nice picture, and it's got a picture of an ash tree which is dying and I brought this up to this select board as well, that there's a lot of trees that are gonna have to be cut down and we need help by mistake because there's a lot of ash trees that are dying. The one in the picture shows the bar being digged in. I don't know if anybody noticed it, but.
And rolled an ash board.
Yeah, it's got a beautiful picture of the damage that's going on.
Mike, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I said we move on this one because that's, the town's cemetery is separate from what this lady is asking for.
Yes.
Is the town gonna cut?
More probably the, the vendor, yeah.
In fact, as you said, it's in, in response to an invoice, correct?
Right. We actually had a copy of the estimate that we gave the select board. So David, then this Austin, I turned it in to the cemetery for the select board.
Further discussion on article forty-one. Hearing none. Article forty-one, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate the sum of twenty-five hundred dollars to help cover the cost of tree removal from the old town cemetery in East Parsons Field on Weeks Road. All those in favor? The revised bylaw of the Piper Free High School Fund as proposed on July seventh, twenty twenty-five by the current Piper Free High School Fund Board of Directors. As the latest, last revision was approved on April nineteen ninety-five. Do we have, no as presented. Those opposed. Forty-two is accepted. Article forty-three, see if the town will vote to move three thousand and twenty-five dollars from the Piper Free High School Fund to set up a Piper Cemetery Account based on a hundred dollars plus interest that Elijah Piper originally set aside in his will to maintain the cemetery. Just don't move. Move the second. Discussion. Yes.
All right, so as I read this, there already is a Piper Free High School Fund. There's already money there. Bought whatever money he donated, he put it in the cemetery fund. We ignore his wishes and now we're trying to catch up. So is this interest that we, we use for this, is, what's the number based on?
So is it based, did I say interest calculation or something to that effect? Put in the year that it started and the amount that it started with, you'll come up with a figure that they calculate. I did that for three sites and they will leave in a couple of dollars.
Okay, so that's an average thing?
Yeah.
As opposed to the specific fund that we had the money in, deposited in?
Yeah. Oh, you mean what those funds were?
You could find out that a dollar in full up. Was it nineteen fifty-two or what? The original town meeting?
Probably a town meeting then. I was thirteen, fourteen years old. I could go to every town meeting in my town. But I wanted to say that Elijah Piper is some, some kind of an ancestor of my family. And this Piper Free High School Fund was started to, because there was a time up there, there was quite, quite Michael, you know, the high school fund, but Piper was put up by him to, so it's very true to commit now to go there without having to pay the tuition.
Hearing none, all those in favor of article forty-three as presented. Those opposed. Article forty-three is accepted. Article forty-four. This is an advisory vote only. Article forty-four, see if the town will support the creation and enactment. Again, this is an advisory vote. Do we have a motion? Move the second. Discussion on this one.
Approach us with the news that the planning board is looking at a, at subdivisions in several areas of the town and people are a little bit up in arms about the number of houses that may come into the town and why don't we have a cap, whatever, a growth limit. So my best suggestion was to bring it out to everybody and this would be a planning board, again, it would be a special town meeting because it's an ordinance that would be enacted. A lot of towns do have them. They only give out a certain amount of new dwelling permits. We're not talking about adding on or doing a shed or doing a garage.
Find out what everybody thinks about it. Yes, sir.
I'm John Let's Go. Having spent twenty-five ordinances that allow for growth, but try to preserve the looking feel of the town. And specifically, if you look at the definition of village versus village residential, and I brought this up during the campus hearings, virtually no definition. Our town is unique in that it's the largest town in Maine, I believe, except the incorporated territories of seven distinct villages, which give us the looking feel of the town. And we have been unable to agree going back twenty-five years, what kind of zoning ordinances we need to preserve that look and feel. We haven't even been able to redefine the difference between village and village residential, no matter what. The question becomes how do we grow? If we want to preserve, that may have plenty of land, but not even enough money to pay their taxes. But this is a broader question. It will be declared illegal by some court because so many towns are doing this that it's going to boil to the state level.
I'm gonna try to think, falling back and forth from one side of the hall to the other. Yes, sir.
My general opinion of new homes being put into a municipality like Parsons Field is good. I think that we need more supportive residents. We need better, you know, better infrastructure for residents that live here and that comes with people moving in here. At the same time, preserving public space for housing units in a, in a particular zone area as opposed to a general stamp on this many houses in Parsons as opposed to, this is my opinion on it.
Carol.
I have a question. What, what would then, let's say you had a limit of ten or fifteen grown, growing kids can't live in Parsons Field, well, they could wait.
Right along right now, there is no answer to that.
Oh, yeah.
It says questions are good for the town, the people. Our comprehensive plan right now addresses it and has certain growth areas that they've identified where houses should be and because of infrastructure, people move in and they want more and we're already determining our budget and we don't have a lot more. Roads, plumbing, all the opportunities. So anyway, that's what this is all about.
I can tell you, Carolyn, I try to stay out of the discussions, but I'll be right with you. Try to stay out of the discussion as much as possible. In Baldwin, we have such a thing, I believe it's fifth being permit, but we limit how many can go to a subdivision and designate some for just my, my kids at regular folks. So, yeah, you can do that. Yes. Well, I think we've got zoning at this point. It does address the size of lots and particular zoning areas. So we do have some of that in place, but this is, this is a long time coming in this town, I think. I wish it was done ten years ago because of what other towns have in place. So I wrote this. An ordinance for, I had a lot of resistance when I thought I, when I sort of dropped the idea, but the select board was reevaluated, I brought this to Jen and shared it with her. It addresses the issue that you mentioned in the same way that Baldwin does. I think like this gentleman said, we're behind the times. Newfield has had a, a limit for, I think, ten or fifteen years. Say Baldwin has one as well, not aware of other towns. But just on the ground, from what I see on Middle Road, on my stretch of Middle Road between Merrill Hill and East Parsons Field, there've been six or seven houses punched in in the last year. You can see the difference in traffic. I'm not against people exercising. Our property values are high as long as we maintain the heritage of this town that preserves our property values that's really needed and important. Yes.
Just from Linda Marsh on Montclair Road.
I just want to mention that the character of the area that I live in has changed significantly over the last ten years. There's two gravel pits within a couple of miles of my house. The trucks are, enormous trucks are running constantly on other stuff. And I do think we have to think about these things. What do we want? Do we want another mobile home park on the road? Do we want to have something to say about the businesses like gravel pits that find our town particularly attractive? I mean, what do we...
In a book written by Oliver Jordan Yelton quite a few years ago, Dan Quinn did it. He researched every town from the east coast to the west coast. The effort was how you would improve the population, the local population was big. What he found was there were only two towns nationwide that did zoning that actually improved the situation and allowed for growth. One itself were a big name, and the other was Port and Order. Now, what they did find is that a ten acre zoning per house was very common, and they discovered that that encouraged urban sprawl more than any kind of residential zoning. So I would recommend before people get started, they check out that book.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to move this on. This is a discussion that we'll have, because this is only advisory for anyone. Gates comes up.
I think we were invited to have a discussion.
I'm going to agree with you on that. We're, we're trying to get the sense of the town in general, and a lot of people haven't had the time to think about it, and some people are bringing up some, some pretty interesting things to think about. Some people have opinions and some don't. So I'd be willing to go on a few more minutes on this topic. Anybody who hasn't had their hand up on this?
Passing this, one is I have absolute no confidence that our town government will not create an ordinance by law, rules or regulations that won't get us sued from day one. The second one is a more global situation is that it's about, if they want to take an arbitrary gamble, they are infringing upon my right as a, as a landlord or citizen to do what I want with my property. I mean, they're arbitrary, but they're a little less so, that we can only have seven permits this year. And in my opinion, the real way to stop growth in bringing people to town is to stop spending money on infrastructure above and beyond keeping roads plowed, passable, and I suppose picking up the garbage, but everything else can yelp, and nobody's going to want to come here. That's all I'm saying.
I'm only counting that as a matter of law. This, anything you do in this is a land use issue, and it's not going to be done by town government in the form of the planning board or the select board. It'll be town government in the form of the town meeting. All of you are senators in this.
I don't trust me either.
Well, I, I'm not trying to take a position on it, but this advisory, the, the town meeting is the body that will, will decide this. Who else? Harvey?
Yes, I'd like to mention that maybe we can look at outside of town who purchase large lawn land for the idea of a selling situation.
Follow the hype, Harvey, yes, sir?
Well, my, my personal opinion is the town is under attack. What's happening is people are moving further and further out. His life is like, somebody told me, it was like two hundred thousand per acre in between them now. So of course, these builders are going to move up, they're going to come here, but their survival is cheap. The other thing is we don't have an updated building vote, so they can now rebuild everything in place for, for building votes and infrastructure in place. I think we should, we should win this.
Okay, okay, Jen, she's got it, she's got it.
I'm going to hold it out.
Right. We did pass municipalities the ability and the right to limit some of that, and they've worked for the town. We just passed another L D after eighteen twenty-nine that takes away some of the municipality's rights in limiting what we can impart accessory dwelling in it. So to judge, it would involve an attorney.
Get back to you in a minute, Dan. Lady would be...
Just clarifying, we're talking about all new property, there are new buildings, like single-family homes as well as apartment buildings and such, right? Single-family homes as well.
Well, that's people's office. Just clarifying. And it's a straw poll, it's just out here to say what everybody can say.
This is the thing they're in the wind. Ben?
I just want to point out that the comprehensive plan, given that a lot of thinking about this and talking about it, so I suggest you take a look at our comprehensive plan and see what we came up with, and see how that might then...
Be back in a minute, yes?
How would this affect the rescue system with kids?
How does it affect what?
The rescue system, they say you have a hundred new houses in Southwood. You're not even going to have any children in the rescue system.
It, it costs about twenty thousand to support a child in school, and we certainly won't be making twenty thousand in taxes for little homes. So it's, you know, it's not a matter of having people come in because it's going to support a tax structure, right?
Yes. Um, two things. You know, people talk about growth is positive, and it is positive. If you look back around the turn of the century, in Caesar's fall, they had two pharmacies, they had a soda fountain, they had a movie theater, where, what have they now? Well, there's different types of, types of growth that people will come in, like this gentleman said, under attack by a big chunk of land, see, there's a money, you know, a generator, chop it up, and then what happens? Look at Watson Woods, okay? So that was fought pretty hard, went through because of the law. And if you, if you look at building a community, not making money, it's a hell of a difference. Um, I would ask the point, what John Lesko said, we've been talking about this for twenty-five years. Let's not talk about it for another twenty-five, but then it'll be too late. It's already a little bit like that.
What do you think? I just think, we're talking about, you know, possibly putting a number on the amount permits was kind of like what I'm getting at. You mentioned your town, Baldwin, say that's fifteen, I forget the number, I think we used exactly. I think we need a number every other day. That would equate to a home going up every other day for that entire year. That's just the first year, you know? And then take the next year, same thing happened to the street. I mean, so, I mean, these houses can go up fast, even with fifteen a month.
If you promise not to tell, I will divulge the secret formula that we used in Baldwin to come up with that fifteen number. Somebody said, well, how many did build last year, they said thirteen? How many, how about the year before that, fourteen? Well, then, why did we set it at fifteen? And everybody thought that was a wicked good idea. That's the secret formula, but... Uh, yes?
Nice to answer, I think it was your question. My data, the towns collect one dollar in tax revenue and spend a dollar and a quarter.
Yeah. Yes?
Just one clarification on the process, if...
We go to the planning board, ordinance would be written, people's input would be given.
Something that we...
An ordinance to the town meeting, there have to be public hearing, at least one public hearing. The planning board might, in their wisdom, decide to take input from the public hearing, go back and, and do some scribbling and change here.
Still three years ago. And it's my first house that I've ever owned. And I, in that three years, I've fallen in love with this town. And I would hate to limit people like me who are moving away. So I find this very similar to rent control, is people trying to put duct tape on a leaky pipe. People are going to move out, but taking away individuals' right to build dwelling seems to me to be unconstitutional and arguably just not a good idea for the town.
Mrs. Perpere, you got your hand here?
Yeah, because all of that new construction and stuff, because naturally, we'd always have to think about fire departments, ambulances, schools. So all of this is going to go, if we all of a sudden have ten thousand people moving to Parsons Field, where are they going to go to school? Things like that, the ambulances, just, we're going to, you know, everything's got to grow with us, not just people, because they're not, you know, then, then, when they're moving in now, their taxes are X amount. Wait until we say, oh, well, now we need a new school, we need a new fire department, we need, we need new service with our internet and stuff. So that's something to be considered when we're not giving out permits, just willy-nilly.
Well, we're not getting to that point yet.
No, we aren't, we aren't.
That's something that will happen.
I can hear it coming.
Somebody on this side of the room? Joe?
Yeah, I wanted to say that I feel we're losing all of our open space. I grew up in this town, I'm a three-year-old native farm. And that farm stood dead, my brother and his wife lived there. But there are too many houses in sight. Now I'll tell you a little bit of a guilt. When I was a teenager, I read the whole book of Daniel Boone's Life and Time. Or in that, he told some of his neighbors, he said, if you continue to smoke for your neighbor's kid, they'd eat you alive. Give him a mile, at least a mile down the road, then you won't see his smoke or his health either. Nowadays, the health of his kid, they want to be proven, they eat him. We're losing an awful lot of our open space.
I agree.
Food lines and farm lines too.
Yep, I agree. Any further discussion before we take the vote on this advisory matter?
Um... Straw poll, like...
We, it's, yeah, we have to vote on an article to dispose of it. But the way the article is written, it's clear that this is an advisory vote, and we don't, we don't plan by enact any, any law right now. Your selectors and their planning board don't have to do a darn thing with it, but they can. Okay, Article forty-four, see if the town will support the creation and enactment of an ordinance that limits the number of new dwelling permits given out each year. This is an advisory vote only. All of the favor of Article forty-four as read? Those opposed? The article is accepted. Okay, another advisory article. Article forty-five, to see if the town will support the creation of a new constable position. Again, this is an advisory vote only, do we have a motion? Move and second, discussion question. Yes, sir?
What's his job description? What, what does a constable do? We, we call the state police now, we get, I own our part of town, excellent response. So I'm just wondering, what added service are we going to be on there?
They would function the way our sheriff did. That's basically what a constable does. And I, again, I had a lot of residents approach me about, we don't have a sheriff anymore, we don't see the state police, although I agree with you, I think they're responsive, and what would the town feel about constable position? They can, you know, fly down, go do what they need on the road, or they could probably go parking it on the condo. Some are, it would be a job description, you know, basically they do the same thing as sheriff.
Is he a real cop, like a main criminal justice academy graduate?
No, it's a pro training, but not, not...
Not like police or sheriff. Jeffrey?
I'm hearing that the constable giving a ticket, so when we, at Long Farm, when we had a deputy, I think only one, at Long Farm, who was for parking, because somebody's guessing or something like that. So that, I don't know if you've ever seen a parking, but...
Yes?
So this, this goes back to, to our legal fees to some extent, where we're going to put a gentleman or a woman in position who doesn't have actual law enforcement training to, to address issues with people, with a lot of residents who come from civilization, who have certain attitudes about their retirement, who do whatever they want. And I see our, this constable person escalating situations, and now the town's getting sued because, you know, he wouldn't let me park where I legally allowed to park, and he ruined my day because my kids couldn't go where they wanted to go. When, the reality is, is we only moved to Parsons Field for a certain way of life, we talked about that in the last thing. We had way better criminal protection from the state police than we ever did from our forty-hour-a-week dedicated York County shit. The best thing that could have ever happened was if they had a labor shortage, and they couldn't afford to keep coming here, because we were just throwing money away. I, I would say that I see more arrests, certainly more presence in our current situation than they ever did before. And it's just money that we don't need to, to expend as a town. We're all individuals, we can all take care of ourselves. You know, and if it's a situation that we can't, you call the state police, because that's what they're there for.
Yes?
This gentleman may have just answered the question, but if we have the need for a constable, why can't we look back into getting the sheriff's contract back? Would we have access to a more variety of staff, better resources, for legal fees?
Well, probably just by finding a constable, I don't think we can find any sheriff. I, you know, it's very difficult to get those, those kinds of positions built. That's why they took our sheriff.
So it was their decision to take it, not ours?
Absolutely, yeah. I don't have a real answer for that, I'm just gathering some...
Did this, did this article come from the selector or by a petition?
Not from us.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Select board, I should say, I won't get over that vote, till my, till my next life. Uh, Harvey?
Uh, yes, I'm probably one of the people, I remember when we had a constable here in town. And we've had several situations in the past where the C E O needed some accompaniment to go into an area where people were shooting and whatnot, and they were very diligent, and putting himself in danger at that point. It may not be, you know, a total end-all for that situation, but it would certainly be helpful to have someone there that would enjoy attending. There are also other situations where it would be an accident, it may be, um, just any, any number of things. I think it would be a good idea to try and work that out. You should have some sort of police background in order to do so, and you would probably, at some point, have to consider whether they would carry it, whether or not. But otherwise, I think it would be a good idea.
Dan? Yeah, I'm pretty much on the same page. We can't enforce our ordinances with state courts. We need somebody from the town, with the town, that the town can say, go do this. You can't tell the state police to go, they'll show up if they can. That being said, if you're going to put somebody out there, especially somebody with a gun, who's representing the town, they better be trained, and we better have a lot of insurance.
Don't you think that Jack would make a good non-confrontational constable? Is that what you're saying? Further discussion on the constable, yes, sir?
I agree with the gentleman in the orange shirt up there, that the state police do an excellent job. They seem to do better than the contract deputy did. But I also found on the fence here, I think we need, you know, we got home rule, we need somebody who will enforce home rule, and understands the community better than, say, the state, uh, state trooper that is assigned here and can do the kind of things Mr. Flynn mentioned, but, but, like, just the article there, I'm concerned about, we don't want to hire a ballbuster, it won't go well there.
Further discussion on this advisory article. I'll get you in a minute, Jen.
Well, speaking of Mr. Orange Shirt, I have to agree with him. When, I'm not sure that we could, we could possibly do a body on whether we have our sheriff pay off for us. But intuitively, I was against it to begin with, and I'm not so sure it really paid off.
Jeffrey?
Well, I agree with that. You know, when we first talked with the police officer, everybody thought everything was going to change. And for years, we couldn't even get police records. And so I think we're going to end up going down the same slope. We get a constable, we don't get any information on what's going on. I pause this... I, I pause this, I, I would pause this constable there. I think the state police is doing, doing a good job, you know?
Carolyn?
Just quick, um, if, if we get the constable, Michael and I have been here a while, you know, there used to be Johnny going back and, and I, they would come stand here, make sure none of us were fighting, you know, this.
Worked it.
Um, I think, and things like that. But I just think it, I like the idea of having one of them back, but also a mayor. Just toss in a mayor while you're discussing here. After Derek Taylor died, even having even had one, with Mike and I have been talking about, we don't have a store, it's like that anymore, where the community comes together, you know, and finds out what's going on and all of that, maybe it won't stop us, but they're trying to fix that so you can, there's not many, every store you gotta believe quick and leave quick, you know? So there's no like store. So this would have to be a, a roving mayor, who would go around and bring peace and get it found, there's some kind of fight, they show up with the constable and try to get everybody together and, not mediate, but we call them mayor, they have to be a guy or a, or a, you know? I just wanted to throw that in, we kind of missed having that IQ of a mayor, but that was on the other side of town, we need one that can roll, to be honest.
Further discussion on this advisory article? Ever done?
You can want to go on here.
Yes?
Uh, this is just for communication back and forth with the board, but if I'm not mistaken, I used to be a resident, Nicole Griffith, by the way, of Sebago, and just after I moved out of Sebago, I believe they had a massive issue with their constable that resulted in him getting leave without pay for an extended period of time, which upset the town quite a bit. I would just say, whatever happened there, don't do that to him. Thank you.
Eddie, yes?
You mentioned that it's hard to fill the position of sheriff or constable, why is that?
The same reason, we have a hard time filling a lot of positions here, volunteer or paid, just not a lot of.
Not enough paid?
Or, excuse me?
Not enough paid to that position, or?
Well, I, I wouldn't know, you know, we haven't got to that point or determined anything, but, you know, we've got.
But you remember that ad, later some hires.
Secretary for our field board, didn't we, absolutely? Nobody.
All the police departments in the state of Maine are having trouble recruiting new, young police officers. And some of them are can, trying to cannibalize other towns by offering illicit bonuses and a good chape by $10,000 and it's, it's a competitive, it's a competitive thing.
It sounds because their hands are tied in what they can do?
Because they're too much hassle. Some folk, you just like to be able to go home at the supper at five and not worry about getting Shaw beat up.
Yeah, the, the sheriff's department was down, I believe, four deputies, aside from the contract deputies, four out of 24, if I'm not mistaken, when they pulled Darren out of our town. Okay, so that he could be part of their general organization. Um, I believe they had, uh, filled those positions, but they are not doing any further, um, contract deputies.
I, I believe they also didn't have anyone in the academy.
Right, yeah, yeah. Young blood is, is hard, hard to come by.
Yes?
Covid.
How long does persons feel good without a sheriff?
Two years.
Uh, not less than two years, it's been, I guess, a year, a year and a half.
A year, a year and a half.
Yeah, a year and a half, a couple of years. Uh, way back, I'll get here.
And just for anyone that wasn't here, it's very different, the state police presence like others besides is much better than, not to put down the sheriff, but there's just more of them, right? Better response, better presence, they're everywhere. I see them all the time on my road, I did it before.
Yes?
I think this anecdote could be instructive. Quite some time ago, there was a woman living out of her car. She was mentally disabled. I helped her once drive a starter car, she got mad at me because I stopped her from turning the jumper cables on backwards. And then I got a call from a friend in South Parsons Field, who said this woman was sleeping in the woods and the weather forecast was gonna be 20 below zero. We had already had six inches of snow on the ground. I called every town official that I could get a hold of, made me think that you do something, can we open the town hall just to keep her warm? Nothing, 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 nothing. Finally out of frustration, I called the state police. Within 20 minutes, a cop car came up to my road with eight inches of snow, and I don't know how he did it, and was there, and he did something. State police.
Jeff, question? I had motioned that we end discussion, or we take a break. Well, are we ready to vote on, uh, Article 45, Article 44? I, I have that set, if me, I'm ready. Article 45, see if the town would support the creation of a new constable position. This is an advisory vote only. All those in favor? Okay, keep hands up, keep hands up. I get 12, where you get 10?
I got 18, you got more than I did. I can't see.
Yeah, I got 12.
Okay, all those opposed? Okay.
Put your hands up high, please.
He's 19.
I got 19 opposed. Okay, the Article 45 is 19 opposed and 12 in favor, the article failed. Now, the next article is not advisory at all, the moderator would entertain a motion to what?
If both adjourn, I just would like to say thank you to David Bauer. Uh, welcome to Saban, who was here, but David has been many, many years in the town hall as a clerk and on the select board, and I just wanted to say thank you.
It's been my pleasure most of the time. I'm not disagreeing, I hope to stay involved in ways other than the select board.
Yeah.
Thank you, and my best wishes to Saban and the select board.
Did you have something to say about?
Before we adjourn?
Yeah.
Can the select board talk about the process? A lot of people have suggested, hey, why don't we do this, or why don't we do that? What's the process for a citizen to actually, and that change?
Citizen petition?
Petition.
The best way?
Citizen petition, how many registered voters do you need to?
Right now, 86. It depends on the last gubernatorial election, now it's 26. And it's 10%, is it 10% of those?
Something like that, 10% of whoever killed that guy last governor of the election.
I would, can you talk about your experience with the nonprofit?
Yeah, well, before we.
What was your experience?
Before we, before you that, if you are interested in doing a petition, make sure that the petition, the student, people who sign it are registered voters. And if the number is 86, get 96 or 106, because somebody won't be there, thanks to you. So, citizen petition. Um, we're, we're getting a little off track, but this is worthwhile. You want to say something?
Point of interest, who made the chocolate cake?
Who made the chocolate cake?
My mother.
Hello, I'm Michael, too. I guess I'm talking to the people of the town and everything here today, and I just wanted to bring up, we're in a wicked drought right now. There's people out there, I'm not peeping on them, but they have fire, that's, that's going on. I was wondering if the town of Parsons Field could set something up, like lumber, conus, they have smoking in the air, fire hazards.
High?
Fire hazards low.
Comin'.
People riding around, coming into town and stuff to see this. We're in a wicked drought, fire gets going, the whole town will be gone.
True fact, it'd be like 1947. The wars are.
47, the evil version, yeah. But I just had some talking, and that's all I have to say, just bring it up and think about it. And, okay, thanks, Michael.
Uh, real briefly, Jeff, before we.
Yeah, just to say, I, I did bring up that issue of making people aware of high fire danger. And, uh, and the town of Parsons Field has a water spitting outdated, the water spitting on during the drought?
It's on Monday through Thursday, that's the plan.
Monday through Thursday, the faucet is open out front for those who are drought.
We limited it because people were out there washing themselves, they were washing their vehicles, they thought we're inappropriate.
I totally understand the washing, uh, dishes or washing themselves, because they might not have done. The character is a problem, that's the thing. But I may have had one the other day, and I couldn't come to the town hall and get a water, because the town hall was closed.
Okay.
I shouldn't have, and, you know, if we kept that well on Route 25, we wouldn't have to be decades late on it.
Okay, points, points well made. The moderator would now entertain a motion to adjourn this actual town meeting.
I think I'm up for a move.
Second.
Enter your move to second. The motion to adjourn is not debatable, all of you favor. Those opposed?